It's 3:30, so let's begin. I'm Jim Gant. I'm the chair of the Circle to Circle Committee, and I appreciate you all coming out this afternoon. Our purpose this afternoon is to share with you the results of our work over the last 15 or 16 months, and to get your feedback before we put all this together into a set of final recommendations for the town council. I'm going to provide some background on, and some data points, on the work that we did. Glenn Walters from Design Workshop in Asheville, North Carolina, is going to present the vision, the strategy, the options that we considered, and then I'll come back and frame that into the conclusions that the committee reached. And then after that, we're going to take these 20 questions that you have, and use the little clickers on your seat, give you an opportunity to real-time answer those questions, and then we'll be able to see the results on the screen, so you know how everybody in the room voted. So with that, let me try and provide a little bit of perspective. In February of last year, the town council chartered this committee, and I think it was chartered based on the realization that change is coming to our island over the next 20 or 25 years, as it always does, and as an island, we need to be prepared and looking forward to that. Hilton Head Island, to a great extent, has been made what it is today by the baby boomer generation. Most of us, I looked around the room today, we're all in the baby boomer generation, and we have been the largest generation in America, a very successful generation. We made our homes here and have enjoyed it very much. However, the coming generations, the one known as the millennial generation, is now larger than the baby boomer generation, and they will have a profound impact on our island over the next 25 to 30 years. Not only will they be the tourists that come here, but they will be the people that move here and buy our homes at some point in time. So we need to be thinking about the needs and wants of future generations as we try and map a future for Hilton Head Island. There's also the impact of day visitors on our island. As the off-island population continues to grow, there's both an opportunity and a challenge created there. That growth off the island also competes for workforce with Hilton Head Island. As I think about people that I know, that I employ for various ways, that commute from Ridgeland and farther out, as Bluffton gets larger and larger, why should they drive through Bluffton, across the bridge, and onto Hilton Head Island to work? So there will be competition for workforce that we'll face. There's also market competition that we, as a destination, have with other comparable places around the world, or around the United States certainly. And then finally, pragmatically, there are some real limitations in our geography based on our road network. As one of the, actually, as a Seapine resident, made the point many times at our committee meetings, we live in a giant cul-de-sac of an island, and Seapines is a giant cul-de-sac, and Shipyard is, and Palmetto Dunes is, and Calignia is, so we've got a whole series of cul-de-sacs around the island, which makes it very challenging to figure out how to move cars around this island, because to get from one place to another, you've got to get on the same road, go and come back. So I think those were some of the factors that influenced the town council to appoint this committee. Let's see if I can use the right button here. So the committee was chartered in early 2015 to develop a vision with input from the community, to look at the problems that we have today with traffic, and parking, and bicycles, and pedestrians, to prepare a development outlook, and try and project what this environment will look like in 15 or 20 years, and then plan for that in terms of infrastructure across the community. The council appointed 12 committee members, a very talented group of people, all volunteers who gave a lot of their time over the last 15 months, but with a wide variety of experiences to bring to the table. We started that process here, in this room, in May of last year. Many of you were here, I recognize some of you, where we asked the community for input. We did five forums across the community, gave everybody little yellow sticky pads, if you remember, and asked them to write down their views on three important questions. What do you think the purpose and function of this circle-to-circle area should be over the next 15 or 20 years? What changes need to be made to make that happen, and then what obstacles exist? And we got 899 little yellow stickies. If you're having trouble sleeping some night, they're on the town website, you can find them and enjoy reading them. But what the community told us about those three questions is fairly simple and fairly straightforward. In terms of its purpose and function in the future, you can read those things, and it talks about walkable, pedestrian-friendly, green space, small village environment, pretty much keep it the way it is today, only make it better. In terms of the changes that need to be made to do that, obviously, reduce traffic, increase parking, no big surprises there, increase the trails and pathways for bicycles and pedestrians. As you probably read in this morning's paper, there are over 25,000 rental bicycles on the island, and another 10,000 that homeowners own, and several thousand more that people bring with them when they come. So the wonderful bike trail system that we have is also getting congested, and it's not just bicycles, it's three-wheel tricycles towing two-wheel carts behind them with dogs and kids in them, and beach equipment. I saw my first motorized skateboard going down Pope Avenue a couple weeks ago on the leisure path. I occasionally see some segues there. So we have a number of changes that we need to address, challenges that we need to face. And then obviously, there are some threats to making those changes and preserving the quality of life that we've all come to enjoy. Traffic congestion, first and foremost. Several people told us, if you can't address the traffic, don't bother with anything else. Got to start there. So with that as background for the committee, we also looked at a lot of the, we looked at all the suggestions that people made, actually, and you can see them listed here. Some of them are fairly straightforward and simple. Structured parking lots, additional green space, more pathways, pedestrian overpasses. We didn't get very far with that idea. Doesn't quite fit the image and style that we've all grown accustomed to in Hilton Head. Some very direct suggestions on the circle, all of which you'll see presented here today, from signalized intersections to two-lane rotaries to fly-overs, fly-unders, or maybe just leave it alone. Let me comment on some pertinent data. Every year, the town measures traffic at every signalized intersection on the island. Every year, across three days in June, and every five years at the two circles. So fortunately, in 2015 was the year we got good traffic data on the circle. So they measure the cars coming into the circle from each of the four roads, and they also track where each individual car goes. So a car coming down 278, we know whether that car went to the right, to Palmetto Bay Road, whether it went straight ahead to go into Calignia, whether it went left to go down Pope Avenue, or believe it or not, a couple percent of the cars that come in turn around and go back the way they came. I guess they just do it for fun. So we have a lot of data about the traffic, and then what the committee did was to sit down, one of the committee members, who has a great deal of knowledge on commercial real estate on the island, sat down with a plat map of every parcel of property between the two circles, and looked at its propensity and likelihood to be developed over the next 10 or 15 years, based on what's there today, based on how old it was, based on what he knew about the ownership, and how that was changing. And all of that data was then put into a detailed model with the Low Country Council of Government to create a 15- and 20-year projection on what traffic would look like at that point in time. And I have to tell you, traffic modeling, like any kind of modeling, is not a decimal-point precision business. It's much more like hurricane cones of probability that we all get used to looking at this year. Somewhere within that range, something will happen, and that's kind of the way we've looked at traffic. Traffic could be worse than that cone projects, could be better than the cone projects, but at least it gives us a range to work with. There's also redevelopment going on in the island, as we all know, and it's not just redevelopment in Calignia, it's redevelopment at Shelter Cove, it's redevelopment at Pineland Station, it's redevelopment in Seapines. So our traffic actually comes from all directions into the circle, and you'll see some of that as we go forward. And I've talked a little bit about the millennial generation, and how their needs and wants are slightly different than the baby boomer generation, and what the implications for that might be for us in the future. Provide some, could I just talk about traffic on the parking slide? I sure did, didn't I? Well, let me go back and talk, no, I'm sorry. It's hard to see. So traffic, I just explained all the traffic stuff, but focus for a minute on the upper right-hand corner. VPD means vehicles per day. So in 2015, 15,763 cars came out of Seapines and went into the traffic circle. 26,000 came down Palmetto Bay Road, 27,000 Pope Avenue. A lot of vehicle traffic. The point is, it comes from all directions, and we need to be aware of that as we plan for it. Parking is another hot topic, particularly in Calignia during the peak season. As data points, you should know we have 523 paved parking places in Calignia today. The Calignia Town Park that's under development will add 115 paved parking places, as well as up to 125 parking on the grass for really high-volume kinds of days. But at the same week that we did the traffic study, we had USCB go out and interview people who were parking at Calignia, and asked them a series of questions. What's your home zip code? Which is a nice way of saying, where are you from? And we found that over 50% of the people that park in Calignia are just here for the day, which is the off-island day visitor opportunity, I guess, if you will. So we then had the town staff go out and look at parking capacity at the other eight beaches on the island on those same days, and found that there's substantial unused capacity there. So a light bulb went on, it said, you know, maybe we can divert some of that parking demand for beach parking to the other beaches. And oh, by the way, it takes traffic out of the circle when you do that, so it's a win-win on both sides. But in today's world, most people don't know we have eight other beaches on the island. We've got them reasonably well-hidden, so we need to be thinking about what we do with that. The other interesting data point that came out of the traffic survey is that there's a subset of people who come to the beach for the day that just want to go to the beach. They don't want to shop, they're not going to go out to a restaurant, they're not going to go out and have cocktails, they just want to go to the beach, and they bring all their stuff with them. That's an ideal sub-segment to try and target to the other beaches, and shift some of both the parking and the traffic demand. So that brings it to vision, and I'm going to turn things over to Glenn now, but let me just comment on the four principles that the committee tried to adhere to throughout this work, in terms of our planning and our vision. And they were that this area needs to convey, maybe even more than any place on the island, the sense of place that's consistent with Hilton Head Island's image, because when people come to Hilton Head Island, many of them come across the CrossIslands Parkway, and then when they arrive there, that's Hilton Head. And it's important that we have the right sense of place consistent with the values that we all have. And those values need to preserve and protect the natural environment, which is one of our strong suits, always has been and always should be. We'd like to try and provide an exceptional experience for our visitors, so that they want to come back, and so that a percentage of them want to live here and buy homes here and become part of our community. And then finally, we tried to always keep in mind, we want to strike a balance between the needs and wants of those full-time residents and those that just visit. So what you're going to see is a lot of stuff in the next 45 or 60 minutes, and it's hard to condense 16 months' worth of activity and meetings into 60 minutes, so you'll get just a skim off the top, but we'll try and do it justice. Glenn?
Thanks. Thanks for having us. We've really enjoyed getting to know many of you. I recognize a bunch of faces from our meetings that we've had, and getting to know the island differently than what we knew about it before. I've been coming here for 30-some-odd years, and I only knew it because I got confused in the roundabout, and got into the place where we were staying, and basically never left it unless we had to go to the grocery store or something like that. To start to understand the fabric of streets, and neighborhoods, and parks, and places here in this corridor has really opened my eyes, and it's just been a real pleasure to get to know all of you, and it's going to hopefully be a nice culmination to this process. This vision is really powerful. I know it's small words up there, but the idea that this corridor can become Hilton Head's beach village, and it's basically its center of gravity, is really powerful. And there's some things about that that need to happen, right, in order to get to that vision. You just can't snap your fingers and say it's so. A lot of these words are being used in a lot of projects now. Walkable streets, right, neat architecture, parks, trails, interconnectivity, multimodal. And we're working across the country on projects to try to unbundle what Jim talked about, this idea that we grew in a cul-de-sac era in many places, and it means that to get to this idea of village, we have to start to break some of that apart and establish connections where they might not exist right now, and build the framework so that this idea of village can take hold, and it can be real, and it can be meaningful. We have brought some ideas to this, but most of this presentation is ideas that came from the community. And our job was to put those ideas up on the wall, right, to put some background to them, to put some science to them, to think about them from a cost standpoint and a practicality standpoint, to bring our expertise and experience as designers and planners to it, but to help the committee make a decision about what this future ought to be. So it wasn't a top-down approach at all, rather, we were more facilitating what we heard from the community, and then what we've learned in our discussions with the committee, and you all that have shown up to each one of these sessions. And we're going to take you through all that right now, and you'll have a chance in a little bit to give us your opinions once again. The first thing we took down was transportation, and normally, we might start with the big idea and then build the frameworks to meet that, but we knew from the very first day that traffic was a major issue that we had to deal with. We kind of simplified it. Our first meeting with the committee, we had some very simple diagrams that just said, we think this is what's going on here, that people are trying to get in and out of the circle, right, the people that live here and use it every single day, and at certain times a year, there's just a huge thrust of people that come through that circle to get to the most desirable place on the island for off-island people, right? It's a successful beach, shopping area, and it does carry the presence of being the center of the island already. And so the question became, how do we start to distribute people around that circle better so that it isn't so clogged up, and are there ways to increase the capacity in the circle? And that became the focus of the first part of our study. One of the big thoughts was that there are seven other pretty amazing beaches, right, with lots of parking and lots of facilities. They don't necessarily mirror what's happening at Calignia, but there's a reason to think that if you just made them more visible, that people would go to those beaches, right? And if you can see, just driving onto the island, looking at a simple diagram, the distance isn't that much different between going to Calignia or going to one of these other beaches. So we talked about how you might be able to make those become more obvious destinations for people, and that would include starting out with some food trucks, right? There's no food and beverage service out there. Calignia has that in spade, so how do you start to get something happening out there? And food trucks are kind of taken off in places, and they're fun and funky and catered to a different demographic, maybe, but that could start to build into something there. Over time, you could build other facilities, the water features like Calignia has, or some of the park elements that it does. You could take it as far as you really wanted to, but the idea would be that some effort and energy be put into those beaches so that they become a more powerful destination. Even something as simple as signage, when you come on the island, that alert people that they're here, right? There are signs out there now, and I finally saw them once I knew actually where the beaches were. No disrespect to the signs program, but, right, it's not as obvious, I think, as it could be to get people going there. So anyway, we think that's a really good idea, and so far, we've gotten a lot of support for that idea, or the community's idea, to think about how those other beaches can become more a part of the island experience, and maybe that starts to distribute some of the cars and some of the impact on Pope Avenue in the circle, away from the circle during that really, really busy time when it's inconvenient. Then we looked at all of the ideas that a bunch of really good transportation engineers and the town has been looking at, and we put those onto a matrix and worked through each one of them with the committee. And they have to do with closing some accesses to some properties, which we know needs discussion with those property owners, right, but there's some entrances and exits, and exits near that circle that makes things a little challenging, as people want to get into those properties or get out of them. You can extend the medians a little further, so the left-hand turns across traffic don't happen. You can do better, again, with signage, some pedestrian signalization. So there's a whole host of elements that we think are reasonably low-hanging fruit that could be checked off and worked on and made happen, so that moving around the circle becomes more manageable and more comfortable for more people. I know as a visitor, I didn't, I don't, I still probably don't handle it well, and it was only until the last couple trips that I realized you can actually move around the circle and not even get in it if you want to. It seems to me that the signage in particular might be helpful to people that don't know where they're going, and we've talked about lane markings and things like that as a way to make things work a little better. So that's a bundle of things that can be worked on. And then we started to talk about connectivity, and the vision statement and the community talked about a higher level of connectivity. When you think about village and town, right, there's usually alternative ways of circulating around that town. It's not just all built off of one big street. There's a main street, and a first street, and Elm, and a this, that, and the other thing, and there's alternative ways of getting around. And if you could increase the connectivity, especially for people in the know, around the circle, more people would have alternative routes, and you'd have less pressure on that circle, and less pressure on Pope. We know that these roads lie in places that a lot of people don't like, or a lot of people would have concerns about, right? So Shipyard folks would be concerned about the road that's on the east side of Pope, but it would enable people to go north and south without getting on Pope on a nicely-sized, small roadway. There's a road that comes from Office Park through Boggy Gut that we know would be really tricky from an environmental standpoint, and needs to be carefully designed if it's to happen. But that would enable people coming from Seapines to get down to Calignia without having to get into the circle. And then there's a road showing up in the northwest corner, which would complete a loop around the circle, which would enable people from Seapines in particular to get in and out on the Greenwood Drive without having to get in the circle too. Somebody owns that property, and there's a Publix on it, and a Staples on it, and it would be a long-term proposition, but eventually, things are going to redevelop someday out in the future, right? And having a location to create this connectivity, we think would be a smart thing to do. If you had it 30 years ago, when that shopping center was built and it was part of it, you'd be using it and loving it and not being in the circle, right? So we think that some of this is really long-term, but it should be considered, because I think if we all could roll back the tape a little bit, we might wish that we had more ways of getting around here than just all of us jamming right in the circle every time we want to do everything. We then looked at trails with the bike folks, and there was a lot of really great ideas that came out of that. One in particular is see the yellow that's between Cordillo and Calignia Circle, and the idea there is to get a bigger and more celebrated trail in that last leg that would handle bike and ped a little bit more comfortably, a little more safe, a little more attractively, and that starts to begin to create a different kind of identity there as you get closer to the beach. It could almost extend the park that comes, that goes to the beach park out, up Pope, a little bit further. So that was a nice idea. And then there was an idea, too, that's not diagrammed, about celebrating the beach trail, if you will. Not something hard-lined out there, but signage, maybe there's mile markers, maybe something that just says, hey, we also have this amazing way of moving around the island on the beach, and let's promote that. I think there's another idea in here, too, about trying to get bikes and folks more distributed, and also there's some different environments, especially the ones there on the west of Pope Avenue. We have a, we've worked in a lot of resort environments, Design Workshop has, in its 40-some-odd years, and have worked with some really good transportation folks, too, and a lot of those places are considering and implementing transit systems in different scales, because they have the same challenges, which is, how do we get the employees in? Because they're having to move further and further away, because everything's getting so darn expensive, right? How can we move around here without having to get in our car every single time? And how can a visitor enjoy all the things that we have, too, without necessarily getting in their car? So we had a fellow that we've worked with join us and talked to the committee about the idea of maybe a transit network that came from off-island that was, that expanded the one that Palmetto Breeze already has for employees, and just make that even better way for employees to get onto the island, that maybe there's a way that people would park off-island and get on an attractive and comfortable system to go to the beach, right? And that there would be inside the corridor here, the Pope Avenue corridor, a shuttle system that would begin to connect to different satellite parking lots, and to the restaurants and the beach and that sort of thing, so somebody could get on a trolley-scaled vehicle and move around the corridor and get to the parking. And we think that's a really forward-looking, strong idea to consider, and there's a lot of possibilities, especially with Palmetto Breeze, to think about how you might expand a larger network of transit, but then also, maybe you start with this shuttle idea and sort of grow out of that as well. We got into all the different ways that we can park for beach parking. We're not really sure yet if we, if you all want to add parking or not add parking, right? So that's part of the questions that we're going to ask, because when you think about it, there's sort of two things at play there. More parking means more people coming in to use it, right? But parking's also needed in order for the commercial folks to be able to do their thing. So we looked at ways that parking might be provided, assuming that more parking is desirable, and that included studying whether or not certain streets within a walking distance of Calignia might handle on-street parking. That looked at using some town-owned land for surface lots. That was on a previous slide there, where they might be connected by shuttle. And it also looked at the parking that's going to become part of the park that's being developed right now, and some variations on that, which included the plan as it currently is, which is beautiful, which includes 400-and-some-odd surface parking lots. And then in the community feedback, we, people had mentioned the idea of a parking structure, so we just quickly modeled a parking structure on that site to see how many additional cars that would yield. And then we thought, well, if you're going to do that, and we know that financing those things become really difficult, is there a way to get it financed, and also to create some energy down there through a redevelopment project that could create a public and private partnership that would help finance the parking structure? We thought that if you could get more people living on the corridor, long-term, to walk to the shops, to walk to the theater, to use the park right outside, that that might be a positive thing that would lead towards this vision of a walkable, integrated, multimodal community. So we put that one up on the board for people to think about as well. Then we took on the biggie, which I'm sure is a biggie for you all, which is this business about the circle. And it has been studied a lot, and a lot of good, you know, transportation engineers have looked at it, and there's, as Jim mentioned before, there's been quite a few ideas that have surfaces. And our job was to take all those ideas and, again, try to understand them from a cost and approvability, and an image, and an effectiveness standpoint, so that the committee might make a decision about how it should move forward with the circle. There is a challenge right, out there right now, related to this business of 150-second delays in the LMO, so there's a technical challenge to how the circle functions right now, right? And so we were looking at solutions that would help to solve that. There's nothing to say that doing nothing is not an option. Doing nothing is an option, right? And living with it is an option. It just, there's nuisances there, and there's, you know, there's some other components to that, but we are, we've also concluded that as an option. So the first thing we looked at was a signalized intersection. So the first thing we looked at was a signalized intersection. And that would, right, it would, it would really change a very important iconic part of the island, we think. It actually, in many respects, has challenges in it from a safety standpoint. When you get to an intersection like that, the nature of cars hitting each other is different than it is in a circle. Getting pedestrians across it and those sorts of things become a different, a different thing. And you can see just from these two sections, the amount of pavement to get to that intersection, you know, gets pretty big. It's probably something that the South Carolina Department of Transportation understands really well, and of all the options besides doing nothing, it's probably, you know, on as little expense as, as any of them, but we think it's a, would be a pretty risky way of solving the traffic concerns out there. We looked at a two-lane rotary with free right-hand turns. It has baggage associated with it, we know. I mean, I remember when it was two-lane before, and we've read the articles from people in Bluffton about their displeasure. We've also read tons of articles from places that are similar to here that have designed them successfully, and it's, it is, it's tricky from a, from a perception standpoint, we know, but the design of circles has evolved quite a bit. It's kind of like looking at a cellphone today versus one, how many years ago? Eight, 10, whatever it was, years ago. Each year, they're learning more and more about how to make these things safer and more functional. So we hope that there's at least some thought that good engineers could design this in such a way that it managed speed and safety in such a way that, that made it work, and it does actually resolve the traffic problems, and it does contribute to maintaining sense of place there. There was ideas about flying over and flying under, enormously powerful ideas and pretty darn expensive to engineer, probably not something that South Carolina DOT would understand and would really, really change the look and feel, we think. So we put all those together, and there was a lot of discussion, and there was more to it than just these slides, and tried to put it on, in a matrix to see, you know, which ones were doing, you know, which ones contributed in as many ways as possible, and that included cost, right? That included safety, that included constructibility and complexity, that included the impact to sense of place, ease of use. And the reality is that the two-lane circle, even though we know that it has challenges from a perception standpoint, fits the bill the best out of all those alternatives if you're trying to solve the traffic problem long-term within that space. We then got into vision, and don't worry, you'll be able to comment on that, and we have a lot of questions on that, too, for you. We got into vision. And the first thing we did, and this was actually at this, from insight from some committee members, is that there really is a pattern out there right now that we should consider, and that is that around the circle is a node, right, a commercial node, Seapine Circle, and there's certainly one down here at Caligny. And in between all those, it's more natural and more green, and there's, like, in between Seapine Circle and Caligny, there's a lot of churches through there, right, and buildings are set back, and there's just a lot of forest. As you move north from Seapine Circle with the, with the nature preserve up there and the park, there's just a whole lot of green, and so we thought, well, why don't you just build off of that and make these two really dynamic nodes over time, or keep working on those dynamic nodes over time? And also keep working on making those places in between more natural and more green. That led to a discussion and an analysis about making those nodes more walkable, more compact, more towards the vision that people articulated. And one of the things that we wanted to explore was, are there ways that open space and stormwater management and providing parks can be consolidated and thought of at a district-wide level rather than an individual property level? Because doing that means you just have these really much more meaningful and well-connected systems versus everybody trying to do it on each individual lot, right? So a developer would say, well, I got to do my buffers, and I got to park all my cars, and then I got an open space requirement, and then I got to manage my stormwater, and by the time you start taking all of those pieces out of each individual property, you start spreading things out more and more and more. So one idea is you, you take those natural things and put them together, and then consolidate your village-like things and make that more walkable and more compact. So we looked at town-owned land, we looked at vacant lots, and other possibilities to think about a district-wide park, natural open space and stormwater management plan. Fortunately, that new park really creates an awesome setup for this corridor, especially if, if over time, long-term residences get there. I mean, it's just going to really, it's accessible from a walking standpoint to a lot of people, and then getting, you know, that whole Boggy Gut area up around Seapine Circle creates an amazing open space network that even connects over, from a habitat standpoint, into the golf course and shipyard. We then looked within those nodes and started asking questions about, what does this idea of walkable village really mean? What are the kind of things that would have to happen in order for that to become a reality over time? And some of that had to do with thinking about how internal streets might connect up to each other so that they create walkable block sizes. It's hard to have a walkable community if you don't have streets and, and walkable blocks. And then how you might think about buildings oriented onto pedestrian-friendly streets with parking tucked behind. These are just, these aren't real, right? They're just representative kind of ideas. But you don't even have to necessarily change the amount of square footage that happens in one of these nodes. You can just, over time, reorient it so that you're, you're creating a much more walkable, pedestrian-friendly environment within there. And a much more interesting, possibly, gateway at Seapine Circle, and then when, if you think about the college, some of the relationships there become pretty strong as well. That led us to looking at the node down at Caligny, where I think a lot of focus of the vision is. One of the things that we keep describing is that a higher level of connectivity and walkable and scalable blocks helps to create this village that you're talking about. It's hard to build a village on a, on a big old cul-de-sac like that. So we looked at ways, actually, we looked at about 17 really good plans that have been done for this area over the years and by really good people, and a lot of them had a lot of similar things, which had to do with enabling people to, to move north and south through here without everybody having to come down Pope and be in the Caligny Circle and going left and right. So opening up the networks to travel around and through this Caligny area was part of it. Part of it had to do with the last block or more of Pope Avenue, and can't we get that to be more pedestrian-friendly? Some folks even had that as a green muse in several plans, right? So we looked at that. Can you, can you go from a four-lane down to a two-lane in that last section of Pope and make that more pedestrian-friendly? We looked at taking these, some of the larger commercial properties and, over time, what would happen if you created internal streets in there that connected parking areas together rather than having big, wide expanses of surface parking? And that started to look more and more like a village, and even if you think about where Caligny Circle is right now, thinking about that being the center of this village with something iconic in the center of it, the whole thing starts to really become something interesting. That led us to think about those cross-sections of the street. By the way, back here, our transportation engineer said, yeah, you might be able to get the two lanes on that last leg, but you need to have that other connectivity in order for that to happen. You just can't just all of a sudden do that and not have other ways for people to get around. So some of these things are pretty interconnected and pretty dynamic. You can't have one all the time without thinking about the set of systems that go together to make up a framework like this. So we looked at, at what the character of that might be, and, and the top one is how it is now, right near the park. So it's wide, there's a wide setback to the building, it's a lot of landscape, which is great, four lanes and a turn lane there. This one in the middle is, is what it could be if it was a two-lane section with diagonal parking and a nice broad pedestrian space in front of buildings that may be removed a little bit closer to the street. So you could get this more compact village-like character, if that's what you wanted. And then the bottom one was showing how those internal streets in, in, you know, that really are effectively parking aisles, but internal streets within some of these larger parcels could become a little bit more urban in character or village in character, and buildings could frame those with neat sidewalks. Those are the kind of things you see at Harbertown, right? Maybe not the street right in front of it, but a nice sidewalk, awnings, retail at the ground level, residences above, balconies overhanging the pedestrian space. And then there's projects around the southeast, whether they're purposely built this way, like the two images down below, ones at Seaside there, where the architecture and the land plan are really well-integrated. Or whether that's even in the new shopping center that you have, where there was a lot of intention to the Shelter Cove plan about articulating corners of buildings and, and making pedestrian streets instead of big parking lots. And then if you look at Bluffton, right, there's this idea that there's segmentation in the building and that people are living up above, and people are walking and shopping down below. So these aren't right for this area, right? The, over time, and the market, and the developers, and the community would go through a process to understand what the right image and character is, but I think if you look at all of these images together from all these different places, you start to see a pattern of similarity here that, that could be considered from a principle standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. So that should give you some concept of the many different views that the committee took on this over the last year or so. So let me try then and summarize for you the conclusions that we've reached in a number of these key areas. And let me start with parking. For all of our recommendations, we're trying to couch them in the context of near-term, mid-term, and long-term. And generally, I would assume near-term to be one to five years, midterm, five to 10 years, and long-term, longer than 10 years, to give you some sense of that. There are a lot of things you can do about parking, and given what we know about off-island development and the desire to come to the beach here, I would bet we could build 1,000 additional parking places in Caligny and fill it up every weekend during the summer. But that would have a very negative effect on traffic and on access through the circle, so we don't want to do that. So we think that near-term, the two most important things we can do to address parking in Caligny are a beach shuttle system and diverting some beachgoers to other beaches. The average beachgoer stays in that parking lot four and a quarter hours. So if you could park 100 cars down near crossings parked at Point Comfort Road somewhere in that area and bring them in by shuttle, that reduces 200 trips through the circle, 100 in, 100 out. But if they turn once a day, you're now talking 400 trips through the circle that you could potentially reduce with 100 parking places down at the far end. So certainly worth trying, and we're going to recommend that we try and get that shuttle system in place by next summer to pilot it, and to start the pilot with employees in the Caligny area. Much like Seapines, I didn't realize that Harbertown employees and South Beach, sorry, brain freeze, happens more often these days, employees all park in the shuttle lot and take the shuttle in. Well, there's got to be at least 100 employees in Caligny, maybe more. So again, get them coming in by shuttle, takes cars out of the circle. The same thing is true with diversion to other beaches. If you could only move 100 cars a day of visitors to the other beaches, you reduce the number of cars in the circle by 100. So you start peeling off 100 here, 100 there, another 100, you can start to have some impact on the circle as well. Long-term, we think if the shuttle pilot works, obviously expand it as wide and as broad as you can. We think that over time, the town will need to and want to establish another beach destination at one or more of these north beaches to make them more attractive to people to want to come there. Today, they have parking spaces, and most of them have bathrooms, and that's about the extent of the amenities. So as Glenn said, the addition of food trucks on a seasonal basis for, you know, basic food and drink capabilities, something that would attract kids, whether it's playground or splash pad or water fountains or whatever, something that starts to spread that demand for beaches, would also impact parking and traffic. Longer-term, we think the town should evaluate a public-private partnership for a structured parking garage if the demand warrants and if we can get the traffic under control, but that's a long-term projection that would be subject to analysis and measurement throughout. One of the things, I think it's on another chart, but we are going to recommend that the town go to measuring traffic in the circle every two years instead of every five years, so that you get a better handle on what's happening with growth and you get a better sense of what impact these actions you're taking or having on the volume of traffic through the circle. From a connectivity standpoint, we think near-term, the next five years, the town should build a connector road between Cordillo and Office Park, which could take a lot of traffic off Pope, people in the South Forest Beach area that want to go to restaurants or Harris Teeters, the movie theater, people in Seapines that want to go in the other direction. We could avoid that traffic going out of the circle, or going through the circle. Long-term, it would sure be nice to get a northwest, what we call a northwest connector through the Publix-Staples area, and it probably has to be long-term as part of redevelopment of those commercial properties, because it would be very, very difficult to get a road through there today. It's just not enough width, and there's no room behind it. But something we want to keep in everybody's mind is that opportunity presents itself. We think having a center turn lane on New Orleans Road would be very beneficial for traffic to flow in that way also, down that way. And we have discussed the potential for a road paralleling Pope Avenue on the shipyard side, and if anybody would have had hot-tarn feathers, they would have used them when we were there yesterday. They would have used them. It's not a real popular idea, and again, may never happen. But as commercial properties there redevelop, there may be new opportunities. I'm told that the Bank of America property was recently sold, and who knows what is in store for that property, but maybe there's a way to get a connector road through there someday. So we don't want to lose sight of any of those kinds of things. Traffic, there are a lot of near-term, small improvements that could be made, we think, to affect traffic within the circle. Some of them are very simple, cutting back the vegetation, and I was pleased to see that CSA just, within the last two or three weeks, took out bushes and planted nice red flowers. And within the last week, the town trimmed back vegetation on the other side. So those things will help a little bit. The two biggest things that will help, or three biggest things that will help traffic in the circle are the beach shuttle system, the diversion of cars to other beaches, let's just try and reduce the number of cars coming into the circle. We think there's some opportunity potentially to change the angle at which Greenwood Drive comes into the circle. It is located, how do I say this properly? The distance between Greenwood Drive and Palmetto Bay Road to the left is much shorter than the distance between any other two roads entering that circle, and as a result, you have less time to get out into the circle if you're coming up Greenwood Drive, so we think there's some opportunity there. We think there's some opportunity to cycle the stoplights at Arrow Road, Target Road, and New Orleans Road that would release cars toward the circle in a staged manner. Today, they all operate independently, and I guess it's feasible they could all be green at the same time and everybody arrives together. So we think those changes could help as well. So we're recommending that the town embark on as many of these changes as can be made, and then measure the results of them. Long-term, if, if... Long-term, if those changes aren't adequate, or if as a community we decide we cannot live with the delays that are still there, then a two-lane rotary is the one that makes more sense than the other options we can identify. From a trail standpoint, near-term, we'd like to see a trail that goes back behind the churches of Pope Avenue and moves people off Pope Avenue, spreads some of the wealth around and spreads the people out. We think there's also a need for a trail on the other side of Pope Avenue. Lagoon Road is very heavily traveled, a lot of people walking in that area, and at night there has been one tragic fatal accident there in the last year, so that needs to be addressed. And then, obviously, bike parking. We got all these bikes, we need places to park them. There'll be a recommendation about some on-lane, on-road markings for serious bicyclists, because there are more and more of those appearing, and they need to know where they can go and where they should stay as they ride. And then, long-term, adding more trails as volume and demand requires. We think there are a number of policy changes that we can also make that will start to prepare this area for eventual redevelopment, however the private landowners decide. But things like shared stormwater or shared open space would help very much in creating the village kind of environments. We think it makes sense for additional land acquisition in this area for open space and little neighborhood parks, which contribute to the livability and the long-term residential nature of that environment. We do plan to recommend that the planning commission take another look at the LMO to see if there are any usage and density changes that should be made in light of what we now understand about traffic, which candidly, we didn't know as much about when we rewrote the LMO. So those are kind of our conclusions at this point. We're going to take those, we're going to take the input that you give us as a result of these next 20 questions with your little clickers, and then we'll formulate our final recommendations. So after we play 20 questions, we will take citizen comments and answer questions if you all want to stay and do some of that.
Could we rather just fill this out and we have to do the clicker?
You don't have to do the clicker?
Nobody has to do the clicker.
No, but could we fill this out and turn it again at a later time?
Yes.
Yes, sure you can. You can also take this online. The advantage of, if you can, staying while the clicker's here is you get to see how everybody in the room voted in real time, which is really interesting.
It looked like somebody's already pressed it, but I think you get the idea, one equals one up here, right? Two equals two up here. And so we're going to ask a series of questions, and you'll respond by pressing the keypad. There'll be some that ask you to rank all of them, so you'll press all those numbers. There are some that'll say choose three, and you'll choose three numbers. It counts the last number you pressed. You can change your mind on this thing. And we have a couple warm-up questions to get you going.
If you have trouble with the first question, turn to the person next to you. It's a very glacial experience here.
So where do you live?
Down.
Yeah, hit it. There's no wrong answer. We're going to tell you when we're about to close the poll. We like to keep this moving along, so you guys can get out of here.
So when we get to a pretty good approximation of the poll count, I will say, "And the poll is closing now." Five, four, three, two, one.
You'll get tired of that after a while.
You get sick of me saying that, but you'll have to hear it 19 more times.
And we have to confess that two times, we've had to reboot the program, so don't yell at us if that has to happen this time, too.
Glenn, one other question.
Excuse me? Let's get Jim.
Drop him off at the front desk at Town Hall.
At Town Hall, at the front desk. If you'd like to, on the town's website, we have this poll that you can do on the web as another way of doing it. But if you want to do it by hand, we totally understand, and you can drop it off at Town Hall. Okay, what's your interest in the circle-to-circle area? And here's one of those choose-all that apply. So press each button that makes sense for this question. You can start answering as soon as the question goes up.
The poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one. You can think of me as Vanna White, but I'm the goldfish.
And a couple of other things. So you see how it's working. We get to see where we are all thinking about some of these things. All right, so here, let's get into the meat of it. Remember, we talked about those access management things where there's some entrances and exits to some businesses that they may be able to work with to make those simpler, maybe extending some medians. You can read these here. The possibility of a signal at Office Park in Greenwood, especially pedestrian-oriented to let bikes and pets come across there. Jim mentioned signal phasing. So choose all of the ones that you think make sense here. And if you have another idea, we're all about getting ideas, and we have some note cards somewhere, and just raise your hand, we'll get you a note card and a pencil, and then we'll take those ideas as well. In fact, let me go get those right now.
Are we supposed to be voting now?
Yes, please do. So as soon as the question comes up, if you get it, you can start voting. Okay? And the poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one.
So 22% said signal phasing, 21% said extending the medians, 19 on closing intersections, 17 on right in, right out. So they're a pretty balanced approach there on those recommendations. And then we talked about some safety elements, the bike signal again at Greenwood, the vegetation around Seapine Circle to make it more visible, signage to direct entering and within Seapine Circle, lane markings. And again, the real Vanna White has cards and pens back there in the back if you have Yep.
And the poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one.
This is the fourth session of this, so you can imagine how we feel. The vegetation, signage, lane markings, bike pit, and then all of the above. Again, so there's recommendations there to work with. We talked about road connectivity, right? We know it's long-term, we know it's challenging. We want to ask you about that. Number one is that northwest connector, which is that northwest side of Seapine Circle over there. The road behind the churches is actually this one that's labeled the road through Bogie Gut down to Dealian. Reconfiguring New Orleans, there's space in there to get a center turn lane, you can see the dash line there. The road east of Pope, Pope, I should have said. And we didn't diagram it, but there's the possibility of accessing these areas from below with just opening up a curb button and making a more clear access to some of those parking lots there. So that would be number five. Okay? Getting there?
Guess what? The poll is closing. Five, four, three, two, one.
The northwest connector, got support behind, the road behind churches, so it seems like all of them got quite a bit of support. Okay, Seapine Circle. The questions read, so if I can back up, those access management strategies, that'll help the circle. The road connectivity, that'll help the circle, especially that northwest connector if it could ever happen. So the questions sort of read, I'd only want to do the safety improvements. I'll do the safety improvements and the connectivity improvements only. And then we go into the choices about interventions there in the circle. And finally, number seven says leave the circle as is. So we want to get your best, what your one alternative would be if you had the choice. So right, we have the signal flying over and under, two-lane.
And the poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one.
Make the safety improvements, leave the circle as is. Hey, and somebody's got another idea, we can't wait. Okay, seasonal parking. We didn't talk about this, and we don't know how feasible it is, but it was part of our discussion, which is can you actually charge more toll during the beach season for people that are coming here for the day? So we put that up there for you, not for local folks, but for beachgoers. An app or a website that directs day users to other beaches. It's managing parking through apps is becoming pretty typical these days. Signage and wayfinding, the satellite parking idea with a trolley, north beaches and then marketing them. Number seven, right now, you don't have to pay to go to the beach at Caligny, but you do have to pay at the other parks. Want to do something different about that? He's about to say it.
That poll is closing. Five, four, three, two, one.
The app, north beaches, destination, marketing those, seems like an all-of-the-above kind of thing. Okay, I support the following parking strategies within the Caligny area of the C2C. So little different question, right? Intercept lots for day visitors on land off Palmetto Bay Road linked with a trolley, on-street parking, more town-owned surface parking in the Caligny area, intercept parking for employees, keep the surface lot as it is, a structure, a structure with a wrap. And A is we should not add any more parking to the Caligny area.
And the poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one.
The intercept lots, intercept lots for employees, and then a strong contingent of not adding any more parking to the Caligny area. Okay, to accommodate beach and commercial parking within the Caligny area, one, the commercial properties should provide all of their parking needs on their own site. Two, the town should consider district parking to incentivize redevelopment. That means they don't have to put all the parking on their site so they could put more use on the sites. Three, the town should charge. Four, the town should provide beach parking only, not get into the business of commercial parking. Town shouldn't provide any parking. Parking should remain the same. Can everybody see these okay? If not, if they can, I won't read everyone or partially read everyone.
And the poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one.
Employers should require employee parking off property and intercept parking lots. If a town parking structure were to be built at Caligny, character area, choose one. Number two? Yeah, those kind of were, yeah. We're halfway there. No major problems yet. Dang it.
That poll is closing. Five, four, three, two, one.
I do not support a parking structure. Then 21% wrapped it, and 22% said nice facade and landscape. Okay, remember, we talked about different forms of transit. The committee's charge is really the area within the corridor, but it's hard to talk about transit without talking about the whole network. So one is about the off, you know, coming from off-island onto the island. Number two is more about circulating on-island. And then number three is the trolley system that would work within the corridor.
And the poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one.
Balance between the three. And then, okay. Trails expansions. So number one is the yellow area, there between Cordillo and the circle. Number two is the one we talked about, where on the beach, you might do something interesting Tom's going to say pick number five, I think.
And the poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one.
The wider, more highly-designed trail, all of the trails. 11% said they don't need, that we don't need any more. 14% said we should have more than we have. Yeah, you must have pressed it a lot of times. We talked about district stormwater parks and open space. We'd like to get your feedback about that concept.
And the poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one.
I have a question, Jim.
Yes.
What do you define as Seapine's character area?
That would be, actually, I'm going to be able to show that. See that red circle?
Yeah.
Around the circle?
Yeah.
That's kind of it.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you have that one to show with the green?
Yes, we're going to, yep, in a second here, we will.
Yeah, those red circles are where we calculate to be a quarter of a mile walking.
Yeah, so the Seapines.
I would reasonably walk.
The Seapine one goes from Target Road on the north down to Office Park on the south to where our Office Park would come out on the west, basically, and then Arrow or New Orleans on the east. That's about a perfect walking distance right there. So, talking about that, we'd like to get your thoughts about that character area moving forward.
You know what's coming now. Five, four, three, two, one.
What's the name of the game? As a walkable, pedestrian-scaled, mixed-use village, but the biggest one was it's fine as it is, but it would be great if buildings were painted and better kept up with more landscape color. And then 13% says it's fine as it is, period. The planning principles that should guide Seepine's character area are, so this is this planning principles that we talked about during the presentation.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Vegetated setbacks, internal street connectivity between parcels, all really pretty balanced there, with a part of that balance being we don't need to guide it to be anything other than it is. So now we'll do the same, basically, with Caligny area. Questions are a little bit different. We only have four more left.
We don't have to be up on the top.
We will do that the next slide, yeah. This is character in a broad sense, and then the other one's more about principles.
And the poll is closing. Five, four, three, two, one.
46% said it's a walkable, pedestrian-scaled seaside village with a mix of uses, and then 20% said it's fine the way it is, but it'd be great if the area had more flowering foliage and landscape. Okay, the planning principles for a Caligny should be. Yep. Everybody read those okay? We're going to wrap up soon, but I can assure you that those clickers have no value to you. They don't do anything. They don't open the garage door or change the channel or anything. They really don't, so if you could leave them on your chair, we'd appreciate that.
And that poll is closing now. Five, four, three, two, one.
Low-key with one- to three-story buildings is 23%. Balconies, building setback from the street, integrated architecture. We, part of the getting to this walkable community would be have more people living on it, right, longer term, and so the committee has talked about the type, you know, broadening the market for people that might live on the corridor long-term, and there's also a thought about enabling working folk to be closer to the beach, closer to the amenities, closer to the park, supporting the retail environment down there.
Five, four, three, two, one.
52% says I'm not in favor of workforce housing, and 30% said they are in favor of encouraging workforce housing. And then the last one is helping us prioritize, and this is complicated because you have to rank these in order, so we'll give you a minute to do that.
We've got to concentrate on this one.
Yeah.
Open it, what's at the top, right? Top one is first.
Rank order, so what you think is the highest priority would be the first button you press, and then you would follow after that.
You have to rate everyone, I'll rate one, there's someone, too, that I think we're grading.
Okay, that's fine. Yep.
And one more time. The poll is closing now.
Whoa.
But you were listening after all. How about now?
Are we good?
Five, four, three, two, one.
Trolley, safety and access, connectivity, increase the capacity of the circle, do what's needed to shift demand over to, so pretty balanced across the board there. Some folks do want to keep it like it is, and that's good, too. Thank you all very much, this has really been helpful. As mentioned, all this material's on the web, there's also the survey again. Jim, I think we're going to take public.
Yeah, I'm happy to stay and take public comment or answer questions for anybody that would like to, but I won't hold it against you if you want to leave either. So why don't we take a couple minutes, let people who want to leave, leave. The town of Hilton Head Island, thank you for coming.